Buenas tardes. Te invito a tomar cualquier asiento que puedas. Pusimos tantos en el estadio como queríamos para recordar que también debíamos tener una salida clara. Soy Jim Patterson de la Universidad de Maine y estoy contento de recibirte aquí hoy. Veo a muchos amigos y visitantes del centro de Hutcheson y la audiencia es bueno que estés aquí con nosotros hoy. Este es un evento especial patrocinado por el congresista Michael Mischu, un foro sobre Irak. Y el congresista Mischu tendrá algunos comentarios, comentarios de apertura en un minuto, pero quería pasar dos o tres reglas de Brown con ustedes sobre cómo trataré de operar hoy. En primer lugar, este es un foro para todos, todos, para hablar sus opiniones. Habrá gente hablando de todos los lados de este asunto y pediría que seamos respetuosos de todos los lados de este asunto. Es un asunto muy emocional para mucha gente, es por eso que estás aquí y esto es una democracia y una gran oportunidad para que aprendamos de los demás. Pedimos que mantengan sus comentarios en el alquiler de tres minutos para que podamos tener la oportunidad para grandes números de ustedes para hablar con el congresista sobre sus opiniones. Como este es el segundo foro que el congresista ha hecho, si tuvieras la oportunidad de hablar en Bangor, pediría que dejes a uno de nuestros hermanos y hermanas que están aquí con nosotros hoy que no tuvieron esa oportunidad de llegar a la micrófono primero. La micrófono con la que hablarás está justo aquí y no hay orden particular en cómo vamos hoy. Pero antes de empezar, me gustaría presentar al congresista Mischu y hacer algunos comentarios.
Gracias, Jim, por ese entusiasmo de presentación y también gracias por estar dispuesto a moderar este foro así como el uso del centro, realmente lo aprecio mucho y por todo el trabajo duro que hace el centro para esta región del estado, realmente lo aprecio. Antes de dar muy breves comentarios de apertura, creo que todos tomemos un momento de silencio para Paul Baldacci, quien recientemente falleció. Gracias. También me gustaría reconocer a mi personal, creo que esto es, como sabes, un asunto muy importante, un asunto que el Congreso definitivamente tiene que tener un debate abierto y justo. Y muchas veces te confiarás en mucha información de nuestro personal y mucha de mi personal está muy interesada en escuchar lo que está pasando aquí hoy, así que cuando le llamo los nombres, solo levanta la mano y si tienes gripe o complainte, va a los que le llamará. Así que es por eso que lleve a alguien aquí para que esté por aquí. De hecho, Heather Quinn, ella está atrás. Y te pido que mantengas el aplauso hasta el final. Colin McDonald, quien en realidad estuvo en D.C. y está internando con nosotros en Bangor, Colin está atrás también. Ryan Parker, quien trabaja en Bangor, Ryan está aquí, él está tomando nombres y notas para mí también y es muy importante porque vamos a dirigir el foro similar a lo que hicimos en Bangor, es que hagas tus preguntas, vamos a tomar las preguntas y respondiremos en escritura y si al final del foro tengamos tiempo, definitivamente responderemos a algunas en ese momento. Así que es importante que tengamos tu nombre y número de teléfono porque sé que todavía estamos tratando de rastrear algunas adresas de ese último foro. Rosemary Winslow, mi director de distrito, ella es...
Aquí.
Allá a mi izquierda. Monica Castellanos, ella está atrás. Monica está parada justo al lado de Peter Chandler de D.C., mi jefe de personal, Peter, que vino de D.C., así como Mike Brownlee, quien también vino de D.C., quien maneja mis problemas veteranos y mis problemas relacionados con la situación de Irak. Y como Jim había mencionado, tenemos un foro en Bangor y continuaremos teniendo foros, creo que son muy beneficiosos, pero debido a que Paul Baldacci falleció, tengo que ir, casi el tiempo que dijimos que iríamos. El primer foro en realidad duró más de una hora, que no tengo ningún problema con correr, pero desafortunadamente tengo que ir y sé que otros aquí también tienen que ir para ir a los servicios de Paul Baldacci. Y este es uno de los temas más importantes que enfrenta nuestro país y creo que la gente de ambos lados de este asunto puede discordar y discordar honestamente y creo que es muy importante que respetemos la opinión de los demás y creo que si los miembros del Congreso respetaran la opinión de los demás, las cosas operarían mucho más suave en Washington en comparación con llamadas de nombre y mucha de la cosa que ha estado pasando durante el último año, en particular en relación con este asunto. Estaba muy feliz en Bangor, el foro en Bangor donde había aquellos que oponen la guerra en Irak, aquellos que estaban en apoyo a la guerra en Irak, que cuando los oradores se levantaron para hablar, la audiencia los trataba con respeto. Y creo que eso es muy importante y esa es una forma en que vamos a avanzar con una política común y cómo vamos a mover este país hacia adelante es tratar los demás con respeto. También noté que hay candidatos en el cargo que están corriendo por el cargo electo, ya sabes, en esta área y en realidad vi, ya sabes, Lance, que está aquí, que está corriendo.
Aquí.
No sé si hay otros candidatos, pero quiero... Otro aquí.
Aquí.
Sí, Peter.
Aquí, Joe Perry.
Joe Perry aquí abajo, ¿alguien más?
Donna Gilbert.
Tienen bastante, Donna Gilbert.
42. Hola, Lance.
Sí, Gene Haidbrich aquí abajo. Así que supongo que tenemos bastante candidatos aquí que están corriendo por el cargo público. Quiero agradecerles por correr por el cargo público, creo que es definitivamente un asunto recompensador y si tengo algún consejo para darte aquí hoy, todos ustedes, es trabajar duro, pero es extremadamente importante asegurarte de que escuches a tus constituents. Pueden no siempre estar de acuerdo, pero es importante que escuchen y traten de resolver las cosas y antes de abrirlo, lo último que quiero decir es que hay mucha información relacionada con la guerra en Irak, el Servicio de Investigación Congresional, tienen muchos informes y los mantienen actualizados bastante frecuentemente y si necesitas copias podemos asegurarnos de que te demos copias o si vas a la página web podemos darles. Hay uno titulado "Irak, gobierno de elecciones y la Constitución", que es escrito por Kenneth Katzman, que es un especialista en asuntos de la East Oriente, que fue recientemente actualizado el 20 de enero, Irak, nueva seguridad, así que hay varios, e Irak, el régimen de gobierno de Estados Unidos cambiado y gobierno pos Saddam, que fue actualizado el 13 de enero, así que hay mucha información ahí fuera sobre la guerra en Irak y es bastante... lo mantienen bastante actualizado, así que habiendo dicho eso, espero escuchar tus comentarios y por favor, si tienes preguntas, trataré de responderlas al final, asegúrate de que te demos las adresas y cosas para que podamos responder de una manera rápida. Y también pediría a aquellos que hablaron en Bangor, que permitan que otras personas hagan el primer, y vamos a estar aquí tanto como podemos, pero debes tener en cuenta que tenemos que ir para los servicios militares, así que abrirlo.
Gracias. Mi nombre es Gene Haidbrich de Dixmont y soy candidata demócrata para el Senado de Estados Unidos. Quiero agradecerte, congresista Mischu, por darnos, ambos de nosotros preocupados por la guerra en Irak, una segunda oportunidad para expresar nuestros pensamientos. Como sabes, opuse publicamente a la guerra en Irak antes de que comenzara y continúo a hacerlo hoy. Sin embargo, preocupada, a pesar de la tamaño de esta multitud, es lo que veo como un cansancio de la atención pública sobre este asunto muy serio. En las últimas semanas, nuestra atención política nacional ha sido enfocada en el asombroso admitir que el presidente Bush ha deliberadamente y repetidamente violado la ley al ordenar la spying por el NSA en los ciudadanos estadounidenses. El segundo mayor enfoque, el enfoque de conferencias de prensa, reuniones coordinadas y descoordinadas para influir en la mayoría de nuestros senadores de Estados Unidos, ha sido dirigido a la nominación de la jueza Samuel Alito Jr. a la Corte Suprema, un paso que tendrá un impacto profundo no solo en el equilibrio dentro del makeup de la Corte Suprema, sino también en el equilibrio de poder entre las tres ramas de gobierno. Ambos de estos asuntos tienen un importante significado histórico en este país, pero ambos asuntos también, al menos temporalmente, oscurecieron la guerra en Irak y su continuación de carnicería, increíble costo y profunda inmoralidad. Lo aprecio que hablas del segundo foro de la guerra en Irak, congresista Mischu, espero que ayudará a refocar la atención pública en esta guerra innecesaria, ilegal y en nuestro llamado colectivo a todos nuestros oficiales electos para extraer nuestras tropas de Irak tan pronto como sea posible. Gracias.
Yo soy Nancy Galant, soy miembro de la grupo de afiliación de Blue Hill. Otros miembros están aquí, ¿se levantan las manos los otros miembros de nuestro grupo de afiliación de Blue Hill? Circulamos una declaración pidiendo que firmaran co-HR 635 para crear un comité de investigación y para hacer recomendaciones para la imputación del presidente Bush y HR 636 para censurar a Bush y HR 637 para censurar la encerradura. Y la lista de ofensas imputables de esta administración es larga, comenzando con la manipulación de la inteligencia a Congress para obtener los votos necesarios para la guerra en Irak y ahora estamos enfrentados a amenazas a nuestros derechos constitucionales con la lista de fianzas y el tapado ilegal de la red. Adentro, circulamos, circulamos estos y en cuatro días obtuvimos más de 150 firmas. Y realmente, no son realmente firmas, son aportes y la gente ha listado sus counties para que puedas ver la amplia dispersión a través de tu distrito que está representada por estas personas que te están exigiendo que hagas esto. Y adentro de esto está una copia de un poble que fue hecho, ¿cuántos? 1,200 ciudadanos a través de este país, el 19 al 12, en el que una vasta mayoría de los estadounidenses están a favor de imputar al presidente Bush y voy a dar esto a ustedes, pero me gustaría preguntarle, ¿cuál es tu posición en estas resoluciones?
Yo soy Ann Farara de Brooksville, Maine, y miembro de Pax Christi. El costo de esta guerra, y es cierto el costo de todas las guerras, está siendo producido predominantemente por los pobres y los powerless. Y me gustaría tomar un momento para ser una voz para los sin voz y los marginalizados de no solo nuestra sociedad, sino las sociedades en todo el mundo. El 1 de febrero, la Casa Blanca tendrá una última oportunidad de votar en lo que se llama uno de los presupuestos inmorales más importantes en la historia estadounidense. Si pasa, millones sufren sin necesidad, si fracasa, esperamos, nos darán otra oportunidad para hablar en nombre de todos los estadounidenses y no solo los más ricos y los más poderosos. Así que le pido a quien esté en la cámara y hable por los pobres, por los jóvenes, por los enfermos, por los ancianos de esta nación, quienes los recordarán. No tememos olvidar que la misericordia y la miseria son solo grados aparte. Hasta ahora, el Congreso y el presidente han elegido la miseria sobre la misericordia. Esperemos que el 1 de febrero la Casa tenga el coraje de honrar su llamado sagrado de amar la miseria y actuar de igual manera. Ya sea la necesidad de arreglar el caos de la salud de nuestra nación, levantar el largo exceso de salario mínimo, deshacer las raíces profundas y destructivas de la desigualdad económica como revelada en la tragedia del huracán Katrina, nuestro mandato debe ser la miseria a una escala masiva. Si fracasamos en erradicar el hambre en nuestra nación, proveer de salud calidad para todos, conceder a cada estadounidense trabajador un salario vivo y permitir que todos obtengan una educación de calidad, lo hacemos a riesgo de deshonrar lo que más estamos defendiendo y la guerra nos está robando de nuestra capacidad de ayudar a los más necesitados.
Lo siento, ma'am, no recuerdo tu nombre.
Ann Farara.
Okay, gracias.
Sí, soy Tony Farara, esposo de Brooksville, y es cierto que somos más seguros, que los Estados Unidos son más seguros porque los estamos luchando por allá afuera en lugar de lucharlos por aquí. Si estamos haciendo enemigos más rápido que podemos matarlos, la respuesta sería no, pero esta es una pregunta que realmente podrías, podría haber dos puntos de vista en ello, ¿es Estados Unidos seguro? Propondría una pregunta diferente, ¿el mundo, ¿el mundo relacionado con nuestra política exterior se está volviendo un lugar más violento y peligroso? Las preguntas son diferentes y creo que la respuesta es más obvia si piensas en el, ya sabes, cuando la guerra, en realidad, el mundo en realidad es un lugar más peligroso y violento. Aprovecha las tropas, aporta las tropas es probablemente el slogan más poderoso y no tiene realmente, nada es comparable en el lado de los peacenicos, aporta las tropas. Y recientemente estaba en una reunión republicana donde hicieron muy claro que es imposible estar en contra de la guerra y apoyar las tropas, que eso es un montón de baloney liberal. Creo que es justo lo contrario. En la democracia, somos responsables del despliegue de nuestros soldados. ¿Qué están haciendo nuestros soldados? Están siguiendo órdenes, están siguiendo órdenes. Es nuestra responsabilidad que esas órdenes sean basadas en algo válido, que la guerra no, ya sabes, no se inició en error y/o engaño. Así que la única forma en que puedes, la única forma en que puedes apoyar las verdades es scrutinizar la validez de las condiciones de la guerra y si son válidas, como son en este caso, estar mucho en contra de ellos. Tres, el asunto de la vigilancia, la mayor parte de la discusión que viene del administración Bush respecto a la vigilancia es que sus intenciones eran puras, ya sabes, tu seguridad y seguridad es mi mejor cosa, que estemos tan efectivos, captar a todos los terroristas y etc., etc. El único asunto es la legalidad, así que cuando gastan el 99% de su tiempo hablando de sus buenas intenciones, ya sabes, tapar Estados Unidos y demás, ese no es el asunto, ¿están rompiendo la ley, están abrogando y demás? Por último, gracias, se trata de la elección en Estados Unidos. Sé que cuando entro a un supermercado y voy a la fila de jugos, tengo una elección entre 100 jugos, hay pomegrado y caramelo y tipos exóticos y el capitalismo me overelige y la democracia no me da ninguna elección. En la última elección, tuve una elección entre una guerra y una guerra inteligente. No considero eso una elección y sé, y sé que estoy votando en la guerra de nuez en la próxima elección y no, no importa el partido para mí en ese punto. Gracias.
Yo soy Julie Spear de Haverside. Me gustaría ecocar lo que dijo Nancy Galant al principio sobre pedir imputación, la resolución de inquiría es el primer paso para determinar si el presidente ha cometido ofensas imputables y es argumentable que la guerra continua representa crímenes contra la humanidad violando el artículo 6 de la Constitución de Estados Unidos, el Acto de Crímenes de Guerra de 1996 y numerosos tratados internacionales. También hay tratados de guerra química que están violando, el uso de uranio desplegado ha creado un desierto de basura en Irak y francamente estoy igualmente preocupada y creo que todos tenemos que mirar hacia adelante a Irán y el pastel que eso representa, lo que significará si el uso de armas nucleares escalada y tenemos que preocuparnos por lo que sucede en nuestras costas. Los números son aburridos, pero las estimaciones nos dan entre 6 y 9 mil millones de dólares al mes que esto nos cuesta y te exijo que examines el costo aquí. Tenemos que dejar de financiar la guerra, ese es el primer paso. Muchísimo es perdido para nosotros en términos de todo, desde la atención médica y la educación y los artes hasta la preparación del huracán y las tropas de la Guardia Nacional que estaban en Irak en el momento de los devastadores huracanes en el Golfo no estaban disponibles para nosotros. Muchas gracias por mantener esta reunión.
Yo soy Jonathan Krebs de Appleton. Hay mucho que quisiera decir hoy, pero el tiempo es limitado y hay muchas personas que necesitan ser oídas además de mí, pero apoyo lo que otras personas van a decir sobre los terribles costos en términos de sufrimiento humano que está pasando todos los días y que parece ser en gran medida ignorado por los medios de comunicación principales. Está pasando en Irak, está pasando aquí, así como los costos a nuestro sentido de identidad nacional, costos a nuestra seguridad personal, costos a nuestra libertad personal. Voy a enfocarme hoy en los costos económicos de esta invasión ilegal y esta ocupación ilegal. Finalmente, los costos humanos y los costos económicos son inseparables. No es una cuestión simple determinar todos los costos económicos de la invasión y la ocupación porque la administración no incluye muchos de los costos en el presupuesto normal, solo los mantienen fuera del presupuesto como solicitud adicional para apoyar las tropas, pero un reporte independiente fue publicado este mes por Linda Bilmes de Harvard y Joseph Stiglitz de Columbia, Stiglitz es laureado en economía. Tiene el título "Los costos económicos de la guerra en Irak, una apreciación tres años después del comienzo del conflicto" y el texto completo está disponible en línea. Le pediría a todos, si están interesados, solo googleen los costos económicos de la guerra en Irak y encontrarán la información. La administración Bush tomó la cifra de 70 mil millones de dólares para este adventure en el Congreso. El Office de Presupuestos Congresionales ahora estimula el costo hasta 2014 en un rango de más de 400 mil millones a casi 650 mil millones, dependiendo del escenario. Esta nueva investigación, sin embargo, demuestra que estas cifras son demasiado bajas y las estoy citando aquí. Estas estimaciones, sin embargo, underestiman el verdadero costo de la guerra para Estados Unidos por un amplio margen. En este paper, incluso tomando un enfoque conservador, hemos sido sorprendidos con cuán grandes son. Podemos afirmar con cierto grado de confianza que exceden un billón de dólares. La estimación actual de operaciones militares en Irak solo es de 7,1 mil millones de dólares por mes, eso es más de 236 millones de dólares al día, todos los días. En el corto periodo de esta reunión, los contribuyentes gastarán aproximadamente 20 millones de dólares para la operación en, perdón, ocupación. Y como señala esta investigación, esos costos son solo medio del verdadero costo de la ocupación porque有一些financiación se oculta en el presupuesto de la DOD y otros costos como la atención médica continua para los enfermos no han sido considerados en absoluto. Con eso en mente, se acerca a 40 millones de dólares gastados mientras estamos aquí hoy. ¿Hay mejores formas de gastar este dinero? Anya en esta sala puede darte mejores formas. Salud, reconstruir la ciudad de Nueva Orleans, la lucha global contra el hambre y el Aids, programas sociales, hay todo tipo de formas diferentes de gastar este dinero de una mejor manera, en cambio, estamos bancarretando el país. En este país, el Congreso está mirando reducciones planificadas en los próximos cinco años de casi 40 mil millones de dólares a programas sociales como Medicaid, papeles alimenticias y préstamos estudiantiles. ¿Por qué el Congreso tiene tanto problema en encontrar dinero para estos programas pero nunca se ostenta a la pregunta de cuál es el dinero para la guerra y la destrucción? El congresista, esto es lo que me gustaría ver que hicieras. Me gustaría recordar a todos que el artículo 2, sección 3 de la Constitución dice: "El presidente, "tendrá cuidado de que las leyes sean ejecutadas de forma justa", así que firme el resumen 635 para crear el comité de selección, para ver qué está pasando y hacer recomendaciones sobre los motivos de imputación, para censurar al presidente a través de la resolución 636 y el vicepresidente 637, para firmar el resumen 4232 para cortar la financiación. Uno más, me gustaría que tomas el mensaje de las personas que están aquí hoy, de tus colegas en la cumbre, te levantes públicamente contra los terribles crímenes de esta administración. Tu ejemplo en hacerlo hará forzar la atención inmediata a estos asuntos y demostrará que la discusión es adecuada. Y una más, el artículo 1, sección 8 de la Constitución, da al Congreso el poder de declarar guerra. El Congreso debe recuperar el control de ese poder y debe nunca más financiar guerras
Mi nombre es Pat Lamarche. Solo quiero volver en tiempo un poco al agosto de 2001. Fui entonces juez de juez en B98.5, eras entonces presidente del Senado de Estados Unidos del Senado de Estados Unidos principal. Y juntos sentamos en un patio en una biblioteca en Augusta porque el presidente había tomado el objetivo de leer y estábamos recolectando libros y la coragemente de entonces presidente Mike Mischu, él estaba allí conmigo con la National Guard de la Armada principal y recolectamos libros y la guardia los protegió y estuvimos allí durante tres días. Y sé la coragemente que tienes y sé que entonces ni uno de nosotros tenía el poder de luchar contra este presidente, pero ahora lo tienes. Y estoy contenta de que lo hagas. Así que aquí te recuerdo de ese día para animarlo y sé que hablo para todos en esta sala cuando te pido traer nuestras condolencias a ese funeral esta tarde. Es una gran pérdida y si tomáramos un minuto para los soldados que perdimos tan lejos, estaríamos silenciosos hasta esta hora el martes.
Yo soy Connie Jenkins de Oro, y me gustaría también ecocar el aprecio del congresista Mischu por otra oportunidad para que nos hable. He pensado durante varios días sobre lo que podría decir que haría una diferencia, que sería diferente de lo que ya se ha dicho porque tantas personas han hablado eloquently sobre lo que está pasando. Lo que finalmente decidí fue que no podía encontrar nada nuevo para decir porque las verdades son simples. Esta administración ha asesinado al pueblo de Irak, primero a través de continuar con las sanciones que llevan a la hambre y la enfermedad y luego a través de bombas, armas y uranio desplegado. Ha destruido una civilización, involucrado en tortura, contratacieron a mercenarios para llevar a cabo sus actos, negó la representación legal, forzó a los prisioneros políticos y etc., etc., etc. Si fuese una creyente en teorías de conspiración, que no soy, pensaría que Osama Bin Laden estaba en la factura de Bush porque el 11 de octubre fue la mejor cosa que jamás ocurrió a Bush y compañía. Les dio la excusa para llevar a cabo el curso ilegal, inmoral que ya había estado en los trabajos y cada vez que se publica una nueva tarta de Bin Laden, Bush es capaz de sacar las palabras "libertad, democracia, seguridad, terror" y levantar la bandera mientras la prensa embebida parroga sus historias. George Bush no quiere libertad y democracia en Irak más que lo quiere aquí. Quiere petróleo y poder por el bien del poder. La historia no juzgará con gentileza a aquellos que a través del silencio son complicitos en estos actos de esta administración. No creo, no creo que esta sea una ocasión en la que la gente de buena voluntad pueda discordar, como el presidente Bush es tan afán de decir, "La guerra en Irak es incorrecta y ha sido incorrecta desde su inception". Así que estoy aquí hoy para hacer dos cosas. So I'm here today to do two things. First, to ask you to support the resolutions that others have spoken of, to create a select committee to investigate and make recommendations for impeachment, to censure Bush and Cheney, and to end the war now. And second, I am here to say the one word that matters, the word "no". No to the continued slaughter of Iraqi citizens, no to the continued murder of our children who are carrying out Bush's agenda, no to torture, no to force-feeding, no to destruction of civil liberties, no to spying on American citizens, no to blood for oil, no, no, no.
Thank you for being here, Congressman Mischu. My name is Kenny Cole, and I'm from Monroe, Maine. And I just want to express my feelings that I do not feel that our world is becoming a safer place. Maine is not becoming a safer place as we're losing citizens in the war. The days when our leadership told us that nuclear weapons would never be used, that they were created only as a deterrent, are over. Now our leadership states that it wants to develop usable nuclear weapons. Congressman Mischu, we are frightened, we are scared. We cry out for leadership to help us stop the madness that is making our world a more dangerous place.
My name's Dennis Chinoye. I live in Bangor. I missed that one, so thank you very much for having this one. Over the years, our country and our presidents have allied themselves with a number of enemies of freedom. Dictators who ran police states, who repressed and tortured and massacred their own citizens. A recent shortlist of the more infamous might include Augusto Pinochet in Chile, Ferdinand Marcos in the Philippines, General Suarte in Indonesia, the Shah of Iran, Manuel Noriega in Panama. Very bad people. The list also includes Saddam Hussein in the 1980s when he opposed an Iranian government we opposed, and the Taliban in the 1990s whom Ronald Reagan compared to our founding fathers when they were fighting the Russians. The reasons we supported these people were outlined concisely by Theodore Roosevelt in describing Anastasio Samosa, another brutal dictator whom we supported in Nicaragua. His exact words were, "He's a son of a bitch, but he's our son of a bitch." In 2002, Saddam Hussein was the same son of a bitch he'd always been, but he wasn't George Bush's son of a bitch, nor did he have anything to do, as we all know now and George Bush knew then, with who had attacked us on 9/11 or why. So taking advantage of our country's fear and anguish, George Bush hijacked 9/11 and flew it into Iraq. And our two senators from the state of Maine, abdicating Congress's constitutional authority to declare war, authorized him to do it if he liked. This crass political act of bait and switch was shameful, lethal, and expensive. Thus far, it has caused 25,000 to 30,000 Iraqi civilian deaths, 16,000 wounded, and 2,000 dead Americans. Hundreds of billions of dollars now unavailable for the most basic health, education, and infrastructural needs at home. Equally important, it constituted a glaring breach of our homeland security. This is not hyperbole, but plain truth. If he does nothing else, a commander-in-chief who sends our sons and daughters to fight a "war against terrorism" is obliged to identify the enemy. Who threatens us? Not just who are bad guys, but just who exactly has us in their crosshairs? Because the people who flew airplanes into the Twin Towers didn't hate freedom, they hated America. And it behoves us to reduce their number. Instead, this commander-in-chief has created far more enemies, has engendered around the globe far more hatred of America and Americans than before we embarked on our shock and awe campaign, before we became an international poster child for torture in the name of freedom, a stance that our own vice president to this day refuses to renounce. Meanwhile, the people who actually attacked us can only smile at our self-inflicted rise of homeland vulnerability and at the deadly quagmire in which the president has mired our soldiers. Earlier this month, George Bush, as commander-in-chief of the United States military, depicted people who criticized his war in Iraq as providing "comfort to the enemy", which happens to be our Constitution's verbatim definition of treason. This smear and implied threat to United States citizens is an attack on the freedom we are purportedly defending halfway around the world. Insult to injury, it is his second major breach of homeland security. And this, too, is no exaggeration. The right of citizens to say without intimidation what they think about what their leaders do is bedrock American freedom. And anyone who threatens that, even the president, especially the president, is a threat to our homeland security. Perhaps our senators who gave the president a carte blanche to wage war are similarly loath to express outrage at his implying that his critics are flirting with treason. Maybe it's just easier for a dead ex-president than for live senators to tell the unvarnished truth. So here's Teddy Roosevelt again to George Bush and to Dick Cheney. "To announce there must be no criticism of the president or that we are to stand by the president, right or wrong, is not only unpatriotic and servile, but is morally treasonable to the American public."
Well, thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. My name is Chris Paulson, and I live in Lincolnville with my wife and our two grown daughters that are off to college. I'm here today to ask you something and to set an example for my daughters. I object to being taken to war as a country under false pretenses. And I would like you to do everything you possibly can in your power as a congressman to extricate us from that situation and to not use war ever again to solve problems. I would never think of pounding on my children to express them something that I want to teach them or convince them of, or a friend, or even someone who disagrees with me. I would try to work it out with them by talking and debating and with the other most important word we have at our disposal, and that's with love. To sum up, I think our entire country needs leadership in this regard, and also something else that's very closely related, and that's energy independence, clean air, and a clean environment. With those things, with efficiency in our country, we will not need to hear the excuse of going to war for oil ever again.
Hello, my name is Robert Walters. I'm in Stonington, Maine. I don't have a cellphone, but I'm going to say something. I watched the commercial for Verizon where they have a gentleman get a cellphone, and then there's like a thousand people behind him. When he gets his cellphone, we follow you all around. We should sit in the Senate with you. Give us those 50 spaces and let us speak on issues so we don't have to come before one person and put the burden on you to speak for us. I'm ready to move to Europe. I am so dissatisfied. My father came here to escape fascism in the 1930s, and I tell my children that the pendulum has swung, and I'm ready to go to Europe now to escape fascism in the United States. I can't believe what's going on. Every day, there is a new horror that defaces me. I heard last month that 200,000, 250-pound bombs were dropped on Iraq in the year 2004 by one squadron. It was over a billion tonnage of bombs. That shocked me for a day. Then the next day, I heard something else that shocked me. The next day, I heard something else. This week, 30,000 people were laid off from Ford, and the stock of Ford went up. What kind of country do we live in when we suffer and other people make money? Where is the unity in this country? And then you have the Alito confirmation. I'm sitting there dumbfounded. This man is going to strip the Congress of their powers, and they're going to vote for him. I can't believe it. When I went to college, what I learned was the checks and balances in our government. We have a Senate, we have the House, we have the judiciary, and we have the president. That line is so thin. We have a politicized judiciary, and if the Congress caves in on Alito's confirmation, our system of checks and balances is over. It's finished. Someone told me the other day, it's like a ratchet wrench. Once you assume a position, there's no going back. Every day, there's another ratchets around our necks that's getting tighter. And you have the responsibility not to worry about your political future, but to stand up for the people in this country and for the Constitution of this country. As a senator, as a House member, you have a lot of influences on you, and things get discouraged because everyone makes common sense regardless of their position. But what's happening to us out here is real. And it's, we're not going to have a country anymore. We're almost at that point now. It's global warming. Susan Collins goes to the South Pole to tell us that we need a study about global warming. Who doesn't know that we have a problem now? Now, I'm grateful for this time, but unless you have the courage, maybe the conviction to believe what we're saying is true, and stand up for us as you will, the many, we are going to lose this government. There's no second chance when it comes to this. I thank you for your time.
My name is Chris Stark. I'm from Winterport, and I'm a member of the Waldo County Progressives. And I want to thank Representative Mischu for having this public forum. I'm here today to urge you to support House Resolutions 635, 636, and 637. The first being to create a select committee to investigate and to make recommendations for impeachment, the second to censure Bush, and the third to censure Cheney. I also urge you to co-sponsor a bill that will immediately remove our troops from Iraq and to provide immediate reparations. I believe we've had enough cause to impeach the president and vice president when they knew they had, when we knew they had fabricated the reasons for going to war, but clearly that wasn't enough for Congress to take action. Using a national tragedy for gaining a foothold into the Middle East, protecting U.S. interests and the U.S. dollar from the euro in Iraq, and establishing permanent bases there are actions stemming from greed and arrogance, not American principles of fairness and decency. The violation of international law and the destruction of human life that has ensued is unconscionable. There is a Buddhist saying, "It was the parasite in the bowels of the lion that destroyed the lion." I believe lying to the public to wage war is the most perverse action imaginable, and those who lie to us are the parasite that threaten our democracy and security and must be held accountable. I'm deeply saddened by the way the Bush administration has played the psychological game to wage war, demonizing and dividing the world into those who demonstrate unswerving support for his policies and those who raise concerns. They connect the war on Iraq to a war on terror and shamelessly send soldiers there who believe they are liberating Iraq and protecting American freedom. The so-called liberation has already killed over 100,000 Iraqis. Independent journalists and returned soldiers from force reconnaissance units in the army are beginning to share stories about the widespread use of torture in Mosul, North Babl, Fallujah, and other Iraqi cities. They describe how they broke bones, smashed feet with axe heads, and falsified records to make it appear like the detainees were foreign insurgents, not Iraqi civilians. All these things happen since the public learned about Abu Ghraib. The president apparently has no qualms about using torture, and the vice president openly seeks authority for the CIA to use torture in violation of international law. Under the president's watch, there are secret CIA prisons that don't register detainees, so-called ghost detainees. And detainees have been secretly sent into those countries with a proven record of human rights abuses. Recent reports show that the wives of supposed insurgents are being detained to get at their spouses, further violations of the Geneva Convention. While the U.S. found no weapons of mass destruction in Iraq, we have certainly been using them there. The tragedy of Fallujah, a city where 350,000 people were displaced and 10,000 buildings were destroyed, has gone largely unreported. A documentary by the Italian TV network Rai24 called, the documentary is called "Fallujah: The Hidden Massacre," and I have a copy of it if you'd like to look at it, shows how white phosphorus, or whiskey peat, was used in cluster bombs on that city. White phosphorus produces a dust cloud that reacts with skin, oxygen, and water. The Italian documentary shows hundreds of corpses of men, women, and children summoned their beds with their clothing intact while their skin was melted or burned to the bone and their faces frozen in agony. The dust, when breathed, sears the lungs and suffocates its victims. This chemical has the same destructive effect as napalm, a violation of Protocol III of the Geneva Convention. In addition, the spike of birth effects and cancer rates throughout the bombed areas of Iraq from so-called depleted uranium used in bomb casings is by itself a crime of global proportions. Silence and paralysis is one of the greatest threats to our security. So many crimes against humanity are being committed, and our government acts as if it's above the law, further alienating us from the rest of the world. Act now. Support these resolutions. Walk out on the president's State of the Union address. Show the nation that Maine has leaders with moral conviction that are saying enough. Thank you.
My name's Al Larson. I live in Orono. I'm a Vietnam vet. I served three tours over there. And I know that the comments that I'll make here are shared by quite a few veterans that I know that are in your voting district. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your support of Barbara Lee's House Resolution 197, renouncing permanent bases in Iraq. And I'd also like to ask that you would support Jim McGovern's Resolution 4232, calling for an end of funding for the illegal war. President Bush's approval ratings are once again at a low point in his presidency. This is due in part to the disclosure of the illegal spying on our citizens by the National Security Agency, and also the illegal gifting, not only to members of Congress, but to Bush himself by Jack Abramoff. It's interesting to watch the scurrying about and distancing by the guilty in Washington. I can only think of someone kicking over a log in the woods and watching the sunlight hitting ants underneath, and they all run trying to get away with the sun that's evening. But the overriding reason, I think, for Bush's fall from grace is the continuing illegal war and occupation in Iraq. Now, in order to offset this fall in the polls... Now, in order to offset this fall in the polls, Bush's administration has begun the counteroffensive. Karl Rove is going on the attack as he prepares the scripts for his mouthpieces to read. They have smeared the honorable records of those few members in Washington who have actually been in the military. To attack the military service of veterans such as John Murtha is reprehensible, especially coming from those chicken hawks who showed their true cowardice during the Vietnam War. Once again, we're gonna be subjected to the foolish quote, "You're either with us, or you're with them." That lingo is only designed to drive a wedge between honest political positions. Rove will once again bring out the fear campaign. And I'm afraid that those citizens of our country who don't read the papers beyond just the headlines or the sports pages or get their news from the mainstream media will start falling for this propaganda again. It's way too similar to the '50s and McCarthyism. Is the Democratic Party gonna let them get away with this? I'm afraid that I know the answer to that question. This coming year will be extremely important if we're to halt the downward slide taking place in this country. Bush's approval ratings were much higher during the last presidential election, and putting aside the issue of voter fraud and electronic manipulation, which is another whole hearing you could have. I'm very worried that if the Republican representatives can hold on to their positions in November during a time of low poll ratings, there'll be no stopping the control of the Republican Party in this country. If that happens, and if the Supreme Court's decisions are shifted to the right by the addition of Judge Alito, the freedoms that we Americans have taken for granted for centuries will be under attack, and we'll only have ourselves to blame. The war in Iraq has been the fulcrum upon which all these new directions have turned. It is critical to stop the funding of that occupation. If that can be accomplished, I believe that there will be a chance to keep our national honor and get this country moving back in the right direction. So I ask you, like Micho, to lead this fight. You have done a good job representing the people of your district. You're one of us, and we're counting on you to do the right thing.
Good afternoon, Representative Micho. Thank you for creating this forum. Thank you for everyone for coming out. I'd like to second applaud all the comments of my predecessor, brother and sisters here. When I think about Mr. Bush, a four-letter word comes to mind that starts with F. It does end with L. It's got to, always in the middle of it. And either he's a fool, or he thinks we're a fool. And I, and I, one thought that comes to my mind is back in his State of the Union address in 2003 where he included the aluminum tubes as a rationale to go to war. What do you think that we all thought, having seen that debunked on the Internet in November, that our Commander in Chief was standing up in the most prestigious moment of his, the whole year of the whole country, and, and predicating going to war on the basis of information like that? I think about particularly the thing that was mentioned about depleted uranium. There's as much radioactivity that has been deposited in Iraq as there's more than was dropped in Hiroshima and Nagasaki. What I wanted to particularly draw your attention to is related. While I'm sure you're well aware of the precariousness we face as a result of environmental degradation in Iraq and the world over, and the numbness, denial, apathy, ignorance, and overwhelm that plagues many of us due to it, would you agree that while it is convenient to point fingers at corporate media, a dysfunctional government, and global corporate sovereignty, and in true Pogo style, are not we the ones responsible for maintaining the status quo with our lifestyle? My other question is, in light of the recent discovery that there is way more climate-disrupting carbon in the atmosphere than in over a half-million years, would you support a global cooperative initiative to attempt to prevent likely extinction, no matter how radical, even if it included one child per family phasing out of burning fossil fuels, cessation of all military activities, and a dissolution and recreation of our government as is our duty as it described in the Declaration of Independence?
First, I want to thank you for giving us this opportunity to share our thoughts and ideas with you. It's nice to live in this part of New England where democracy is alive and well, at least at a local level. My name is Dan Avon. I'm a resident of Belfast, and I consider myself to be a loyal and patriotic American. I served in two different artillery units in Vietnam from May of 1968 to May of 1969. I love my country and my flag. That being said, I find this war in Iraq to be a travesty. Over 2,000 brave service people and tens of thousands of innocent Iraqi civilians have lost their lives. Our accomplishments so far seem to be to have established a fertile training center for terrorists and to have planted the seeds of civil war. Our reasons for being there, weapons of mass destruction and ties to al-Qaeda, have been proven false. I could go on forever about this, but at this point, I'm gonna quote a few famous Republicans and war heroes far more eloquent than I. I wasn't into the Teddy Roosevelt one, but somebody beat me to the punch here. But this is United States Marine Corps Major General and two-time Congressional Medal of Honor recipient Smedley Butler. "War is just a racket. A racket is best described, I believe, as something that is not what it seems to a majority of the people. Only a small inside group knows what it is about. It is conducted for the benefit of the very few at the expense of the masses." And next, General David Shoup, former U.S. Marine Commandant and Medal of Honor recipient. "I believe if we would keep our dirty, bloody, dollar-soaked fingers out of the business of these nations so full of depressed, exploited people, they will arrive at a solution of their own. And if unfortunately, their revolution must be the violent type because the haves refuse to share with the have-nots by any peaceful method, at least what they get will be their own and not the American style, which they don't want and above all, don't want crammed down their throats by Americans." And I'd like to finish with a quote by right-wing pundit Rush Limbaugh. This is from November 3, 1988. "And now the liberals want to stop President Reagan from selling chemical warfare agents and military equipment to Saddam Hussein. And why? Because Saddam allegedly gassed a few Kurds in his own country? Mark my words. All this talk of Saddam Hussein being a war criminal or committing crimes against humanity is the same old thing. Liberal hate speech."
I want to thank you, Mr. Mishu, for making this possible. It really is so good and healthy to hear people speak out this way and of you to hear our voices. I just am exercising my right as a citizen of America to say I oppose the government and what's happening at the executive level. And I, I guess I'm just really worried about the corporations swallowing America and becoming more powerful and more controlling of the world. And I'm knitting a baby sweater. I want them to have a future in America, a healthy future, a good future. I also want to say that, and I think a lot of people have said such wonderful things here, it just is very basic that when we go over to another country and kill the children and families over there, and don't think that those people are gonna hate us and want to take revenge and do terrorism to us, when we look at ourselves and see how we feel when our families are hurt and our children are mutilated, how we feel as basic human beings who are very primitive, I think we really have to question is what we're doing going to end terrorism or feed it? Thank you.
An articulate company I'm in. And I know that it is the time. It is the time to stand up and to really be an alternative because we're losing our nation. And I love the fact that... And last year, I had a little girl, nine-years-old, comes in with belly pain. A little girl, you gotta sort through what that belly pain might be about. After weeding out all the medical issues, it came down to the fact that her dad was being sent to Iraq the next week. He was there with her and didn't want to go, but he's in the National Guard. It wasn't what he imagined he was going to be doing, but he was going to do what was asked of him. And he went. And thanks be, he is home safe this year and comes back in for another visit. Same little girl, same belly pain. I said to him, "What? At least this year, we don't have to worry about..." He said, "No, I'm leaving tomorrow." I said, "You're leaving tomorrow?" I said, "Whoa, wait a minute. This can't be." He said, "Well, there's no mill jobs left. He's going over for private security where he can make $60,000 a year and try to send his two daughters to college." And he's gonna risk his life and that child's love. Because he has to, because there aren't jobs here where people can make a livable, sustainable wage. Okay, so we have a really big picture. I think everyone's been trying to paint it. Something absolutely essential is changing in this nation. Our good intentions, we believe in freedom, we believe in helping people. We don't want to see Pakistanis standing in the cold with no shoes on their feet. We don't want to see New Orleans not getting rebuilt. But burnout, burnout, burnout for so many people because it seems so hopeless. It's not hopeless. You're here, we're here. It is not hopeless. Stand up!
I'm Catherine Guyan-Gest from Le Moyne. And I too want to say thank you for being here a second time. We really appreciate it. We have, many of us have been trying to talk with our senators to no avail, and we know what it means for you to give this kind of time to us. Thank you. If we want to take a really pessimistic view on this, we're in a real mess. We, the United States of America, we citizens of a country that is supposed to be a role model for democracy, we, all of us who are concerned about what our country is doing at home and abroad, and all of us wanting to feel that we have a voice and a role in setting the policies and directions of our country. The Declaration of a War on Terrorism is leading us down a path of self-destruction. Can it happen that in the name of responding to the events of 9/11 that we will do to ourselves that which al-Qaeda intended? As I prepared to speak today, I found myself monitoring things I wanted to say. I realized that I fear that I no longer have freedom of speech. I fear that I can immediately join those in the terrorist surveillance program, no matter what the renaming is, still a domestic spying program. From some reports, if we speak out or write against the war, we can be subject to secret surveillance. My goodness, yes. We are in a real mess. In name of, in the name of war, our freedoms are eroding, whether it be at the airport, at our borders, in our communities. Our rights are being taken away. Our privacy is openly or secretly violated. Our economic stability is being hijacked by the astronomical, human, and financial costs of our actions in Iraq. Our social programs are being diminished or destroyed. Our pride in this country and our beliefs in what the United States offers our citizens and the world are withering. Our trust in our form of government and the persons who occupy elective office, our trust turns to cynicism and disbelief. The respect and support of our country abroad has diminished significantly as a direct result of our attack in Iraq and has turned to distrust, guardedness, and isolation. By many studies, our security, both as citizens and as a country, is much lower than it was prior to 9/11. We do not need an external enemy. Our enemy is within. This is not just a mess, this is a serious crisis. How do we get out of this crisis? I have two proposals. We need to change the language around what we are doing in Iraq. And we need to change how we are addressing the actions of al-Qaeda. Our actions in Iraq are an ongoing invasion and occupation of a sovereign nation, unprovoked and entered into through lies, deceit, and incompetence. Therefore, war is the wrong word for this action. Invasion and occupation are the more accurate and true descriptions of our presence in Iraq. Invasion and occupation. If we change one word, war, Mr. Bush's constant reference to victory is hollow and deceitful. If we change the word war, Mr. Bush's grandstanding such as this, plan for victory, his grandstanding of successes and winning, whether on the deck of a destroyer or on stage at the U.S. Naval Academy, these take on an image of Hollywood fantasy. With all other reasons for the invasion and occupation of Iraq evaporating, the administration is now continuously linking Iraq to the war on terrorism. The whole world knows through the Downing Street memo and other writings that this administration planned and intended a military action against Iraq prior to 9/11. There was no terrorist link in Iraq until we created the political instability and the fertile environment for the rise of groups to defend sovereignty of Iraq and the agenda of minorities. Our continued presence in Iraq is a continued support of al-Qaeda and an encouragement of Islamists to join the jihad against us as invaders. I want to return to our response to 9/11. The act of sending four planes to destroy key buildings in our country and the resultant casualties was a heinous act. This was not random killing as are suicide explosives in Iraq, Israel, and elsewhere. This was a deliberate attempt to show the vulnerability of the last remaining superpower in the Western part of the world. In the days after 9/11, our political leaders had a choice. To gather in the international understanding and support and unite in an effective address, in an effort to address these attacks as international criminal acts, as criminal acts, as they were defined abroad and as we defined previous bombings in Texas and New York, or to create an atmosphere of war. The Bush administration chose to declare a war on terrorism. How does the Declaration of a War on Terrorism serve this administration? Firstly, terror is a state of intense fear. The definition of terrorism is a systematic use of terror, a sense, a systematic use of terror, a sense of intense fear, especially as a means of coercion. By using terror as a basis of the attacks and therefore a basis of its response, the Bush administration pushes the country into a state of fear. From there, it has granted war powers, and as long as it uses the rhetoric of a war on terrorism, it can rule by fear, maintaining a sense of intense fear and using this as a means of increasing control over all aspects of our lives. As we are being reminded almost daily by our President and Vice President, war grants leaders extraordinary powers not allowed in our democratic system of checks and balances. A war that is being fought for me is a war for which I am responsible. I did not want to be responsible for our attack on Iraq. I do not want to be responsible for it now. I do not want to be responsible for one more American or Iraqi death. I want our actions in Iraq to be defined for what they are: invasion and occupation, killing and coercion, actions that have no legal or moral foundation. Because of the choices to declare war, we are now ourselves a wounded nation, not because of 9/11, but because of our choices in responding to 9/11. We are wounded financially, politically, constitutionally, internationally, and morally. We are wounded personally when we fear speaking out, when we feel we have lost our civil liberties, our trust, and our security. How do we heal? This is the real question. How do we heal? We face and accept the wrongness of attacking Iraq and get out as soon as possible with all the, with, with all the needs and with all the help that is necessary to the Iraqis. We discontinue the war power... to the Iraqis. We discontinue the War Powers Act immediately. A president that continues to lie and rule by fear, or who considers himself and his administration above the law, is a president who destroys the foundations of our democracy and puts our country in the most dire jeopardy. Please move immediately toward the articles of impeachment. Two more points. We understand that the very nature of a criminal or terrorist act, like 9/11, is that it is unpredictable and uncontrollable, and that it is intended to create instability and fear. Our ability to meet that act is in our internal community strength and support of each other. Our greatest challenge, therefore, is to move from a rhetoric of war and a culture of fear to a culture of strength and ability to meet the challenges of another possible attack. Bring our National Guard home to be there when we need them.
My name is Alan Beecher. I come from Monroe, and I am too grateful that you came. Much of what I had to say is already covered very eloquently. It concerns bringing order from chaos to the rule of law. If we do not enforce the rule of law, we only have chaos in our society. I would like to point out that after resigning from his fourth term of office in Congress, Donald Rumsfeld joined the Nixon administration. His deputy was Dick Cheney. The two of them formed the project for a new American century amongst Paul Wolfowitz, Jeb Bush, Louis Libby, Dan Quayle, and others. We know that them today is the neoconservatives. During this period of time, Spiro Agnew, Vice President, was removed in a bribery scandal. Nixon left with charges of contempt of Congress, abuse of power, and obstruction of justice. George H.W. Bush joined this pack of dogs as CIA director. They took, during Ford's term. During Carter's term, they all left to become CEO of drug companies, oil companies, coal companies, and telecommunications companies, and came to represent those companies back into office in the White House during the Reagan years. During Reagan's years, against the War Powers Act of Congress, he sent troops to Beirut. Three hundred Americans died there. He also invaded Grenada illegally. Nineteen soldiers died and seven hundred and fifteen were wounded. During George H.W. Bush's administration, the neocons invaded Panama against U.S. and international law, Operation Just Cause. Twenty-three Americans died, three hundred and twenty-four were wounded. The Gulf War killed three hundred and forty-five and wounded a thousand. Donald Rumsfeld is an architect of this Iraq war and all the wars that I just mentioned. These people are the dogs of chaos. The presidents have been the Wizard of Oz. The neocons are behind the curtain, pulling the ropes and the levers. The dogs of war circle us closer. They cull out the young with recruiters in schools. They cull out the old with attacks on Social Security and its drug component. They attack us with a flood of cheap foreign workers and a lack of good jobs. They have shown the face of chaos in Katrina and has thrown off the balance of power in Congress and the executive branch. Rumsfeld has been working in Congress or the White House since I was ten years old. These people are neocons that have been in government and control of the White House for three decades. Presidents are limited to two terms, eight years. Why have these people taken over our government for so long? I would like you, please, to introduce a bill that would limit cabinet members and employees of an administration to the same number of terms.
My name is Deanne Wharton, and I'm from Swanville, Maine. Again, much of everything that we were going to say has already been shared. There are just a couple of short points that I would like to bring to your attention, that a forum like this needs to continue, that we should be establishing something like a mid-coast town meeting system. We need to bring these ideas to the public again and again and again, and this is one of the finest ways of doing this. Now, as we've all spoken on the war, I have my one thought for you on the war, and it is this. With the twenty-three hundred lives and families completely destroyed and twenty thousand or more permanently disabled, twenty percent of returning veterans are talking about having post-traumatic disorder. Will the price of lifelong care and therapy be included in the public cost of this war? And as a member of the Veterans Affairs, will you be able to bring it to the congressional attention that a lifetime of cost needs to be built in to the Department of Defense budget? And with this, I would also like to remind us that we were fooled in 2000 with a selected president, fooled again in 2004, because we have not ended the loopholes in campaign finance reform, and we still are allowing partisan control of the ballots in most states in this union. We need to have campaign reform. I'd like to speak shortly about congressional ethics, a Congress that brings us a clean-skyes initiative that actually poisons the air, healthy forests that slash and pave and destroy our national parks. We have the no child left behind law, which is just, you know, that's the one that identifies common good practices and then leaves them behind. We have a deficit reduction budget passed in the middle of the night with no or limited floor debate that actually increases the deficit. Will you actively assert the congressional power of the purse to rein in this executive, executive power and return to the constitutional balance of power? And also, as a congressman with congressional pay, Social Security, a full health medical plan, and a supplemental retirement package that all congressmen have, will you support recommendations that any member of Congress will forfeit all of these benefits when and if they begin working for lobbyists in this country?
Hi, Mr. and Mrs. Mishu. My name is Christine Fowler, and I live in Belfast, but I grew up in Melanocke, and so I feel a certain kinship. And in fact, when I was born in Melanocke, when my mom gave birth to me at the hospital there, my dad, in 1967, my dad was in Bintui, Vietnam, where he had enlisted because he felt so strongly for his country and for his community and for his family. He came back and, in fact, helped raise me in that same community. And so, like you and many other people in this room, I was raised in a tightly, close-knit community where people were instilled with values of responsibility, hard-working values, and integrity. And when those values fell short, then the people in the community dealt with it. My parents moved back to town, they became teachers, and they moved back to town. And my dad was a sixth-grade teacher, and he always prided himself on his ability to kind of root out and know when kids were lying. He just knew they would. And if he couldn't catch them, then he said, "You know what? I don't care if I can't catch them, I'm just gonna let it go because I know they're gonna do it again, and I'll catch them then." And he was an excellent man, and he still is, but he, he would pride himself on that ability to hold kids accountable in the classroom context. I'm a preschool teacher by day, and I'm constantly struck by the parallels of my job that I do with kids, trying to teach them ways to live their life in the community of the preschool, in their families, with each other, and with me, and watching myself make mistakes in leading them, and looking at the larger picture of our country and the ways that we could take some lessons from preschool, classroom, community work. So many eloquent speakers and well-prepared speakers, which I'm not, have shared reasons why our administration really should be held accountable for the harm that those policies have done to individuals, like one of my students, whose family was in complete upheaval when his dad was over in Iraq, and whose dad probably is going back. Or like communities like ours, who've been decimated by corporate misuse and abuse and leaving behind incredibly hard-working people. It's just not right. Or entire nations, our country. Whoa, I mean, people have just said so many things every day. You're shocked. What's going on? And Iraq, not to mention the entire world, whether the human occupants or the animal and vegetable occupants, there needs to be some accountability. And when I walked in, my heart surged because I saw the Iraq War Dead flag. And my mom was there at that event and witnessed the reading of all of the names of the Americans and the corresponding number of Iraqis, a fraction of the Iraqis who have died as a result of this war occupation based on lies and abuse of power. Most of us here in this room, Congressman Mishu, do not have the power to, as individuals, hold our elected officials accountable for lies. But you do, and I ask you, please, do everything you can to hold accountable our elected officials in whom we have put our faith, that they will execute their powers in the good of the public, both here, in our country, and in the world. Thanks.
We have just a little bit more than half an hour left, so I would ask the remaining speakers to be conscious of Representative Mishu tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Representative Mishu, for being here and for your kind attention to the people who are speaking. I'd like to speak also to the other people in this room and appreciate the passion that has come from those people who have spoken, and to also appreciate the sleepless nights that probably many of you have had, as I have had, over these issues that are articulated here today. It's not easy for me to speak. I was not planning to speak today. It's very disturbing to me. I vacillate between taking care of myself, finding a little piece in liberty, you know, doing the homestead thing, and being out there among the public, trying to raise awareness about what's going on in this world. And I suspect that's true of many of us here in this space. People are, people I know, it wasn't just this one person talking about leaving to go to Europe, it's many people who are talking about going to Canada, leaving this country, because they're so distraught with what's going on here. It is not a partisan issue. I think there are some courageous Republicans sitting in this room, and I commend them for being here, for listening, for being part of this discussion. I encourage them to, when we have future discussions like this, to express their points of view. This is not a one-sided issue. This is an issue of heart for all of us. We all need to explain what it is that's important to us and find the common ground and work toward that together. I'm very concerned, not only about Iraq. I'm concerned because I see the same groundwork being laid today that was laid in Iraq being laid for Iran. I am seriously concerned that there will be another attack, there will be another tragedy in this country. And that attack or tragedy, or engineered attack or tragedy, yes, that's a possibility. I'm not saying it's real, but it is definitely a possibility. Could be a perfect excuse for the Congress being dragged along, what's that word, somnolent? Asleep again. And I think it's, you know, once fooled, one thing. Twice, huh, I don't think so. The American public, I hope, will revolt if that happens again. And I really demand, not request, demand of our Congress people and our senators that they wake up and realize what's happening. There are some people here who are running for Congress. There are some people here who are running for governor. Thank you. And we need to look at, what do these people stand for? I voted Democrat in the past. In fact, once, I voted Republican. I haven't found a whole lot of solace in my heart for having done either of those, quite frankly. I think we need, thank you, I think we need to vote for the people who express the points of view that are important to all of us. Thank you so much for listening.
Good afternoon, Congressman Mishu. Thank you for coming. I'm Kathy Mink from Waldo, town of Waldo, Waldo County. I want to very briefly bring up what has become the primary third rail of American politics. It used to be Social Security, but that third rail is now the role of Israel in American foreign policy, and especially in the war in Iraq. I would just like to point out that the state of Israel gets carte blanche, no questions asked, never repay, three billion dollars a year from the American taxpayer. No matter what it does, whether it obeys the international law or not, it gets its three billion dollars. Congressman Mishu, I understand that in August, you took an all-expenses-paid trip to Israel with the good graces of AIPAC, the American-Israel Lobby. It is the strongest lobby in the United States Congress. Every congressman in the United States has an AIPAC minder, an American-Israeli lobbyist who comes and sees if the congressman needs anything, and also to be sure that it votes on those things that Israel wants to have. Currently, I believe, there is a one-hundred-and-eighty-million-dollar request for the United States taxpayer to help pay for checkpoints in the illegal apartheid wall that Israel is building around the Palestinian territories, on Palestinian land. One-hundred-and-eighty million dollars. Congressman Mishu, and I hope your person over there has my name, Kathy Mink, will you vote for that one-hundred-and-eighty-nine-million-dollar, one-hundred-and-eighty million tranche of money to help Israel continue to build its illegal wall? Now, what has this got to do with Iraq? If you all recall, Mr. Sharon was one of the first and loudest drumbeaters for the United States to invade Iraq, and he said better sooner than later. Janet Karpinski, who was the general in charge of Abu Ghraib Prison, revealed that she went into the prison one day and saw people she didn't recognize, and she said, "Who are you?" into the prison one day and saw people she didn't recognize, and she said, "Who are you? And where are you from?" And they said, "We're from Israel, and we are interrogators." General Karpinski was amazed, as we should be. The Israeli army is training American military, and they are training them in urban warfare as they conduct it against the Palestinians. They are here in our army bases, training American soldiers to build fences around villages and to bomb people, and then to kick down their doors, and to make them wear ID cards. This is the way Israel fights the terrorists of Palestine. So I just have a few questions that I'd like answered. Are you going to continue going to Israel on all expense-paid trips? Or will you vote for what is now an effort to stop those expense-paid trips by lobbyists for congressmen? And if you have to go somewhere, the American taxpayer will have to pick up the tab for that. And I would also like to know how many times you have voted to fund the illegal activities of Israel against the Palestinians, and how many times you have authorized Israel to act in concert with Americans' illegal war in Iraq?
Representative Mishu, thank you for holding this. My name is Fred Morley, I'm from Tennant's Harbor. A friend gave me a most interesting document prepared for Representative Henry Waxman, Iraq on Record, the Bush administration's public statements on Iraq. The word misleading is used many times, but we can substitute a more stronger word, like lies. And I imagine you have on your computer or in paper this thing. So it's just one of the additional pile of records. And thank you for having this get together. Thanks.
Thank you too, and I'm glad to be at your second-hour meeting, and I hope to be at many, many more. My name is Kate Duncan, and I live in Belfast. And I came from Europe originally, and I've thought about going back, but I want to stay here and help this country back on its feet. I'll see you in a moment. What I'm really standing here for is because talking with my friends, oh, no, first of all, I've only lived in Belfast about three years. So what I'm going to say might be a bit presumptuous, because looking around the audience, I don't know a lot of people. But as we were talking before the meeting began, it occurred to us that there were very few doctors and very few ministers here. And where is the leadership coming from these people?
I'm Laura Pines, I'm from Monroe, and I want to thank you very much for being here. I'm extremely concerned about the fact that George Bush and his administration has broken laws, and I'm concerned when the Democrats go along with it. I'm concerned about preemptive strike, which is what Hitler used. I'm concerned that that breaks international law. The Nuremberg Treaty, the US has signed on to that, so that's US law. And it says that when there is something going on that is wrong, when we're breaking international law, our allegiance is to international law. It's not to US law. That's American law. Okay, George Bush wrote international law. He used preemptive strike, depleted uranium, daisy cutters, and cluster bombs are weapons of mass destruction. There is no doubt about it. They fit Geneva guidelines for weapons of mass destruction, depleted uranium, lasts 450 billion years. That raft is the seat of civilization. I think it's symbolic that they use depleted uranium there and in other places. Bill Clinton used depleted uranium. And that's genocide. That's genocide because it continues to affect people, it changes genetic material. Children there have an increased cancer rate. That is totally unacceptable, and I can't understand how people go along with saying Iraq has weapons of mass destruction, and Iran has weapons of mass destruction, and we're the ones, we're the only country that has used them. Torture is against international law. It's brutal. And I can't understand people who call George Bush and fellow friends or followers who call themselves Christians, "Christ said peace." War is the opposite of Christ's teachings. And George Bush, I always think, war, deceit, death, and destruction, that's what he's about. And I sometimes seriously wonder if they care, or if they're even from our planet. I mean, I know that sounds insane, but the fact is they're destroying the planet. They're destroying humanity, they're destroying culture, they're putting in plastic shopping centers, they're destroying the very basis of creation. If he cares about creation, he doesn't destroy culture, he doesn't destroy resources, he doesn't destroy the water and air we breathe. And it's about the corporations, it's about being so greedy that they don't care, and I can't understand it because they have children, but maybe they just can't get over their greed. So that's where it has to stop, and we all have to, you know, work ourselves not to be greedy, not to be the consumer culture. But my last thing is that a definition of fascism is when the corporations and the government are linked, and the people that are running the government right now, there's CEOs here and there, and it's just all mixed up. We have to, all of us, we have to preserve our plan, and I think that's ultimately what it's about. And George Bush needs to be impeached, Cheney needs to be impeached, Arturo Gonzalez, who advocated torture, is the head of the justice system, and Alito. I hope everybody calls up as many senators as you can, because Alito is for unified executive theory, he supports it, which is basically giving the president power. So, I mean, it's equivalent to a dictatorship. And all our civil liberties, I mean, it's at the point where we have a fascist government. There's a movie called Hijacking Catastrophe. The person who mentioned housing for a new American century, the people who are running Volkowitz, Pearl, Bush, Lieberman, they are, I think they're basically insane.
My name is Gerald Olson, I live in Bangor. I taught school here in Belfast 15 years ago, so I do feel very comfortable here, especially when I know Dan Horton's in the audience. We have to be careful what we wish for. In 1970, in an election between Hamas and the PLO, guess who Israel supported? Hamas. So now we've got Hamas in Palestine, we've got Shias in Iraq, we've got Shias in Iran. It's as if Jerry Falwell, Pat Robinson, the Montana militia, Joe McCarthy, and the Salem witch judges were running the Middle East now. As our friend from Appleton, Bob, said, "There's a new outrage every day." And I'm so glad to see my brothers from the American Legion, because I am a veteran as well. Last year, we heard that veterans, wounded veterans coming back from Iraq were being sent to Fort Stewart, Georgia, and they were put in brick crate bunkers with no air conditioning, no heat, and no indoor plumbing. In 150 B.C., when the Romans were in Britain, those soldiers had indoor plumbing. Last week, I read, the army has now passed a regulation, soldiers in Iraq are not allowed to use commercially bought body armor. The Marines did a study, 80% of the 403 Marines killed there might have been saved if they had had the right body armor. But guess what? Guess who gets to wear the good stuff? The generals. The other day, I saw in the paper the headlines that said, "Hamas win unsettles the peace process." Just think if a couple of years ago, in the Boston Globe or the New York Times, the headline had read, "Bush win unsettles peace process in Iraq." The other day, I was watching C. C. Pan, and Helen Thomas once again was snubbed by the president. And I email Helen Thomas quite a bit, she sits right in the front row there, she's been there for 58 years, you wouldn't call on her. So I emailed her and said, "What were you gonna ask?" She had two questions. She was gonna say, "You said you didn't go into Iraq for oil, or for Israel, or for WMDs. So why did you go?" The second question she was gonna ask, "You keep saying that FISA, the federal intelligence security act, is a 1978 law and out of date. But the Constitution is 200 years old." But luckily, we know the answers. Bush went into Iraq because he thought he could, and he thought he could get away with it. And it was part of the neocons, as people mentioned before, the New American Project, it's right there on the internet, in black and white. They could have invaded Korea. We've done that, been there, that's a problem, Korea terrain, terrible. They could have gone into Iran, 70 million people, the terrain is as if Iraq, flat as your breadboard. Tanks can roll right over that country. That's why they went. As for the Constitution, it's the Sabbath. I'm a Quaker, and I am not going to use presidential language. The president referred to the Constitution as nothing but a G-D piece of paper. One last thing. I have a good friend, Ward Riley, who lives in Baton Rouge, and he and his family have adopted sort of a young woman who lives in Iraq, she's 23 years old. And they email her a lot, or write letters, whatever. But I want to read part of what she wrote in this week. "Greetings to my beloved father, I'm so sorry I gave you the impression, I didn't want to write to you, I really do, but I haven't been writing to anyone lately, because I'm still mourning the brutal loss of my dear friend. But I still want to write you honestly, you are like a ray of light in an endless dark with no warning. What people around the world don't realize is where Iraq is heading. Our new government is such a fascist one, it makes Saddam look innocent. And we've come to the point where we don't blame him at all for what he did to the Shias and the Kurds. I feel like an African-American living in a state ruled by active members of the KKK that show no mercy and punishing. Nothing gets safer than a civil war that is already happening undercover. That's how I lost my friend. He wasn't killed by the American forces, he was killed by the Iraqi National Guards that are given assassination orders directly from the Minister Dirry himself, who was an active member of the Iranian secret services. Even if Iraq's war with Iran was a mistake made by Saddam, who was fooled by the hypocrites of Saudi Arabia in the Gulf, we're paying the price, we're paying the price of it now. Every veteran of that war is now in danger, because Iran is a vengeance, and with all of its loyal Shias having control of the country, hundreds of our brave war veterans and pilots have been murdered."
I wonder if I can get you to...
One last sentence. Boy, it's hard, you schoolteachers. We all know who's doing the killing, but like our famous Arabic saying, "Our protectors are our executioners." And then she says, "Can you see why I'm so depressed? I don't see any hope." She says, "I hope I haven't made you sad. Peace and love, Sasha."
Good afternoon, Representative. I'm Dave Putnam, from Brooklyn. I would just like to, well, thank you for being here, but to observe that it's your job to be here, and I would like to represent at least a dozen people I can count on my fingers and toes, who would have been here had it been more possible to squirm out of all the things that we all have to do on Sunday afternoon. It wasn't easy at all for me to get here, and I just want to come briefly, I don't need to say anything more, it's all been said, but I want to represent somehow some of the people who couldn't get here. And let you know that you're awfully... I'd also like to encourage you to show as much strength of character as you can, and as much faith in us as you can, and urge your fellow politicians to take on the constructive disembarkation from Iran, from Iraq, not Iran quite yet, hopefully not yet, as a primary political issue. I think it needs to be in this election that we stand or fall politically on our position on this war. It needs to be brought to the vote, so that it can be seen very, very clearly how we stand. There's no other things that are more important than that. Anything else can wait till we get out of this war, because if we don't get out of this war, we'll be in another one soon, and we're not going to emerge from that other one. So we gotta do it right now. This election coming up is our chance, and I just want to urge you, to urge all of your friends and associates, to have the courage to represent us on this war as a single issue, and get us out of it.
Thanks for coming. My name's Fred Wall from Dear Isle, we've seen each other on a couple occasions. The one thing that has not specifically been asked of you, and that is, I would like to see you initiate legislation in Congress for us to eliminate and destroy all our nuclear weapons. We don't have to worry about any other country getting rid of theirs. Owning nuclear weapons is like holding a loaded gun to your head, pulling the trigger, and thinking you're gonna survive. So if we start using these in other countries, the nuclear waste is gonna get back to us and kill us off anyway. So let's get rid of them unconditionally and get it over with.
I'm very, very nervous, I feel like I'm running sweep on a ski hill. Few things, number one, in Kellogg Round and Root Building, new shelters for some special operation or catastrophe that may be coming, I'd like to say I enjoy your company. I said I will enjoy the company of everybody here when we're living in Kellogg Round and Root shelters after the next emergency. I feel very much like it's the people in this audience that are the enemies of George W. Bush, number one. Number two, in order to support our troops, I produce bumper stickers on a website called nobullshirt.com, and my bumper sticker that sells 90% of the time is "Support our troops impeach Bush." If I were to make a Fox poll, and I've never been polled by Fox, but just looking at the sheer numbers here, I wouldn't say there's two sides to this issue. I would say there's one side to this issue. And then I have to say very quickly, because I'm taking advantage of everybody being here, 80% of our votes are counted by two companies, Diebold, ESNS. They are GOP... They are GOP supporters, and if there are Republicans in the crowd, I don't think you'd like it if the tables were turned. The software has been hacked right now in Florida, and our own Assistant Secretary of State said, "Oh, well, that's okay, because we're gonna be using the machine that has paper. The paper will not get counted if it's a landslide, and if you're gonna cheat, you cheat big." And anyone that tells me that we don't cheat in our elections does not know our history. Somehow, it has become taboo to talk about the fact that this election is screwy. In Georgia, they had all touchscreen machines, there were 22 patches put on those machines, and Republicans were elected for the first time since the Civil War. Now, we've gotta take a look at this, and I'm tired of the silence of the Democrats, it is something to look at. In Maine, 80 precincts count with machine. In Lincolnville, we just gave up hand counting after 200 years because people were tired of counting, but our new town manager never asked if anyone like myself would like to count. I'd like to count. I would like, my new slogan is, "Give a hand, let's hand count our ballots," because pretty soon we won't be allowed to, and I think if we have hand-counted paper ballots and run off voting, we will have a different situation in this country, because I am tired of voting for elect people because I don't want to spoil the Democrats' chances. I am sick of it. I want to vote for who speaks for me, and that's all I'm gonna say. Go to Vote Trump USA and leave the news.
This individual will have to be our last speaker before Congressman Nishu makes a pure remarks.
Good afternoon, folks. I appreciate you showing up at this forum. My name is Lenny Murphy, I'm basically from Melonoke originally. I've got two quick points that I'd like to, I guess, slightly embellish upon, should take just a couple of minutes, a couple of points might have not been brought up. I am a disabled veteran, have been for about 15 years now, and I kind of like to see myself seeing all sides of the issue, because I have gone over against my will and fought in a war I didn't appreciate to uphold our constitutional rights. And when I get back, find our Constitution is slowly going down. I think our biggest form of terrorism in our country right now that we have to deal with head-on, and I put things in writing to all our presidents in the past, and our governors, basically our stock market now has complete control of our real economy. But that's not our biggest terrorism that's going on amongst ourselves right now, no control, and I don't know what is. Another point that I expressed many years ago in a letter to one of our presidents, which was expressed indirectly, was the word "cateral" or "catalog," "lateral," there we go. You know what I'm saying? I'm just a little bit nervous here. I put down that that word should never be used again on this planet in any writing or any form of speech as a way to defer. It's a way to cover up and defer to the reality that we are imposing life-threatening situations, and we are taking of lives over there. So that word has not been used, but still, the word "gook," terrorists, there again, we have to develop a new terminology. These are people, these are not ants, we have to go over and try to step on them because they don't like ideology, which would probably impose hardships upon them, which gives them justification. So with an open forum, we have to basically develop a new way to communicate to these so-called witches, terrorists, gooks, whatever terminology we want to put on to them today, is not a fair interpretation, it's a way to keep us in a global war with these people. Communication, Jesus preached peace, and that is the only avenue that's gonna bring us out of the terrorism that's being imposed upon us on a worldwide basis. If we develop our mentality to actually communicate, and once we're communicating with these people, we'll have some control. Right now, we have no control over them. I'll try to, before I forget, Ryan Parker will be here, as long as he needs to be here, to take the names, address, or emails, or phone numbers for those who ask questions, so we can make sure that we get a response back to you in a timely manner. But I'd like to actually answer some quickly that were mentioned. I know Ann Farah mentioned about voting against the budget, I voted against it before, when it comes back, I definitely will vote against it. Tony had asked about, is the world a safer place today? My short answer is no, I do not believe that it is a safer place today. Matter of fact, if you look at the 9/11 Commission, which is a bipartisan commission, they gave Congress and the president the failing grades to us for not acting upon their recommendation. And actually, if you haven't seen a documentary called "The Last Best Chance" by Senator Nunn, Senator Lugar, one Republican, one Democrat, it's definitely an eye-opener as far as when you look at nuclear issues and what's happening here in the United States. Jonathan mentioned whether or not I would be bringing this back to my colleagues, and the answer is yes, not only Republican, Democrats, but also Republicans, but I also will share it with the entire main delegation, so that those who have not attended or had these hearings, they'll be able to get a flavor of what's going on. Several had mentioned about Congress taking back. I served 22 years in the main legislature. During that timeframe, we've had Republican governor, Democratic governor, independent governor, I've been involved in the majority and minority parties when they control the legislature, and I feel strongly that we, the executive, the legislative, and judicial branches, separate branch of government, and I feel strongly that Congress has not done its job as far as oversight, and I agree that we definitely ought to do it a weekend to make Congress a better. We need those steps to happen. Ann had mentioned something about Jack Abramoff, I didn't take anybody from Jack, so you don't have to worry about that. Chris had mentioned about walking out on the president's address. I would disagree with Chris. I think it's important as a member of Congress, whether you agree or disagree with whoever's president, whether you agree or disagree with what people feel on certain issues, it's important for us to hear everything. And as an elected member of Congress, it's my duty to sit there, whether I agree or disagree with what the president is saying, I think my constituency would expect that. Dan had mentioned PTSD and the ongoing cost of the war. I have been very vocal as a member of Congress as far as any supplemental budgets dealing with the Department of Defense, that veterans should be a part of that supplemental budget. Because when you look at the short-term cost of the war, the bombs, the bullets, those are short-term costs. The long-term cost is taking care of our veterans. I've been on the Veterans Committee for the three years I've been in Congress, I've been actually the only freshman member who was elected as a ranking member of the Subcommittee on Veterans or any committee, because I feel strongly about our veterans. Matter of fact, one of the things that I had my staff do, Mike Brownlee, who handles my veterans issues, who went over a while to Reed Hospital to visit the amputee ward, which actually another staffer of mine, sister-in-law, runs that ward, so we can see firsthand of the casualty of war. Chief of Staff, I brought over there to visit, was Mr. Gray, who was there at the time, so we can see what's going on. As far as campaign reforms, yes, we definitely do need campaign reforms in Congress. It's unfortunate, a lot of the issues that has come up, a lot of the bribes, a lot of the corruption, it's very unfortunate. When I first got elected to Congress, a lot of people asked me what was the most disappointing thing, and at that time, the most disappointing thing was, even though I knew it would be partisan, is the partisanship of Congress, because we can't get anything done by being extremely partisan. That was my most disappointing thing at the time. Now, clearly, when you look at Congressman Nay, Congressman DeLay, Congressman Cunningham, $2.4 million for the bribes, that is disheartening as a member of Congress, regardless of what political party, I know those Republicans are very discouraged as well, and it should not be that way, because that's not what the American people expect or want. I have always voted my conscience, both when I was in the legislature as well as as a member of Congress, and there's been some tough decisions that I've dealt with, whether it's voting for a supplemental budget for the Department of Defense, whether it's voting for the regular Department of Defense budget. I did it because I felt that's right. The last issue I want to address, because a member here tried to impugn my integrity by suggesting that a trip to Israel that was paid, that I'm bought off, first of all, the trip was not, I did not make the full trip because of base closure, I had to do my duty here, so the trip was cut really short. And before I took that trip to Israel, I met with those who felt strongly, AIPAC members, those who were strongly pro-Israel, and those who were strongly pro-Palestinian, to get both sides what their concerns and what questions I should be asking when I went to Israel. It was a very educational trip, I'm very glad that I went. One of the things that I insisted upon the AIPAC community was that I wanted to meet with Palestinians, because I want to hear both sides. And as elected a member of Congress, it's important that we hear both sides if we're going to make an intelligent decision. And there were members from Palestine that I met with, and it was very beneficial. But also, there were members of Congress who were pro-Palestinian as well, that went on the trip, that was paid by AIPAC, and they knew that. And the interesting thing was, both she and I, you know, we talked, I knew she was pro-Palestinian, I know other members who are pro-Israel, and I talked with the group, and it was very educational, and that's how we're going to learn about these things, and it's very important. It did change my view, I was there, actually, I left the Sunday evening of the night of the Gaza pullout, of the Gaza Strip, which is very interesting. Also, since the return of that trip, I met with those who were pro-Palestinian afterwards, to talk to them about the trip, to let them know what I learned about the trip. So I think it's very unfortunate, particularly during these times where there is a lot of corruption in Congress, that some members of the public feel, just because you go on a trip, that you're bought and paid for, that is not true. And I think it's important that, even though you might disagree with elected official, that you do not try to impugn their integrity, because they might disagree with you. There are good people on both sides of the aisle in Congress, and this whole Iraq war issue is going to be hotly debated over the upcoming months. I think with Congressman Jack Murther, who is a good friend of mine, went over in Iraq, talked to the generals over in Iraq, talked to the men and women over in Iraq, he came back, and he changed his thinking on the Iraq war. And even though he might have supported it at the beginning, he changed his opinion. It is because he went over there and talked to the generals, talked to the men and women. But yet, at the same time, this administration tried to impugn his integrity. Had a member of Congress who called him a coward, and that's wrong. If we cannot debate issues, whether it's Iraq, whether it's Israel, whether it's energy policy, on the facts, without trying to impugn individuals' integrity, then this country will always remain divided. We have to unite this country, and the only way we're gonna unite this country is if we honestly can talk about the issues, talk about the facts on their merits. One of the things that I think that's very important, I think actually Kathy had mentioned it, Christine rather, is that mentioned that I have the ability to hold people accountable and what have you. Actually, I don't have the ability to hold anyone accountable, it's you folks that have that ability. To hold your elected officials accountable. And I know it's, sometimes people tell me that it's very difficult to defeat an incumbent. Incumbents get defeated all the time. It might be difficult, but they do get defeated all the time. And the one example I always use all the time, actually it's in my own backyard, is when Charlie Pray was president of Senate, the number-two position in the state of Maine, he was an incumbent, he lost his reelection bid, because the people in that district at the time, they wanted to change, and they disagreed with him. So it is important to stay active. I will continue to have these forums, because I think that they are very beneficial, and I want to thank, once again, Jim for moderating this, for the Hutchinson Center for allowing us to have it here, and particularly for everyone to take their time out to come here today, so that we could hear your comments. And if we hadn't heard you, or whatever, please don't hesitate to get ahold of my office. We do not arrest anyone if you come to the office.